Well, welcome everyone. We are going to begin our meeting with the student report.
Good evening, everyone. The Civil Rights Team presented the December calendar to promote Universal Human Rights Month and Disability History Month. This calendar is filled with activities for advisors to share with their students to learn more about these important topics. The CAMI Project attended a statewide conference in Augusta on December 14th to connect with over 265 students from around Maine, continue to explore students working together to improve civil dialogue. The Student Council created a week of activities for Spirit Week before the holiday break. Activities included Holiday Hat Day, PJ Day, Ugly Sweater Day, and Holiday Assembly. Thank you Student Council for a fun and festive week.
The ELO program distributed a new career workshop series. Maine Career Centers visited the ELO classroom in December to discuss the advantages of using the Maine job link system in searching for a job. In January, the workshop is focused on what soft skills are in the workplace and how they can be used as part of a resume. The winter sports have had a great start. The boys varsity are currently one and six, and the girls varsity is four and two. The boys and girls have had some hard fought games. Yesterday, the girls played away at TRAP and they won 45 to 25, and we are actually the two top scorers of that game. This Thursday, January 4th tomorrow, the boys and girls varsity both play home. Girls at 5:00 PM and boys varsity at 6:30 PM, both against North Yarmouth Academy. And the cheerleaders have been working hard for their upcoming competition.
Thank you. Any questions?
I didn't jump in. I think it's worth staying on there. Emma Blander had 26 points following basketball for a long time. That's a lot of points. Our own little Bridgette had 11, and I just want to give a shout out. We had a ninth grade student score her first varsity basket. Charlotte Seer had her first two points at the TRAP game. All the girls played super well. Have the opportunity to see almost all those games, if not all. Really proud. And I think our boys team is really working hard as well, and I think the wins will come for them. So it's just, it's great to be in the gym, so doing a very nice job.
Becky, would you be able to email that report to us?
Yeah.
I had trouble hearing.
Yeah, no, I definitely can.
Oh, you did too, Maggie? Yes, Maggie, go ahead.
What did you say the time was on the boys' game tomorrow?
Tomorrow, the boys play at 6:30, right after the girls.
That must be a change.
It's an adjustment because I had the girls at 6:30 and the boys at 5:00. I think they flipped off.
Right, I have two.
I think that on the original schedule, I had the same thing, Maggie Oxey. We're in the same camp.
I think they switched it because the girls JV also has a game. So it's like girls JV, girls varsity, and then boys varsity.
That makes sense. There you go, right from the horse's mouth, Maggie Oxey.
It's like it's 6:30. Yes.
It's the boys, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know about the girls because I've got Jack.
It's okay.
Where do I go?
Any questions for our students? As I always say, you're welcome to stay if you would like, or you'd like to go home and do your homework, you can do that too.
Are you predicting a score for tomorrow night?
Yes, we gotta sleep well.
That's the score, sleep well?
No, we have to sleep well and wear a sweat a lot. For breakfast, yeah. For dinner.
Sam, the avoidance of the question?
Thank you, thank you. Happy New Year, Maggie.
Yes, Happy New Year.
All right, I need to answer one.
Okay, so that's me. State Subs, you received record, you have it in front of you. All five channel revenues received recorded. Operating revenues exceed expenses. Expenses continue to be online, you can see it right in front of you. We're in great shape revenue expense wise. Everything's progressing nicely financially. We're halfway through, if you can believe.
Okay, questions, everybody? So please report.
As we discussed and approved at the October 18th meeting, the district purchased naming van for student transportation. It is an all wheel drive Toyota Sienna and with a light. Mrs. Seer is very happy because that satisfies his OCD.
Yes, thank you very much. It's 100% true.
And at the elementary school, we replaced the expansion tank to more effectively maintain oil pressure as well as a new oil hot water heater that was leaking.
Leaking is an understatement.
Sounds fun.
It's loaded.
It's split.
Sounds better now.
Good. All right. Welcome, Danny.
Hi. Sorry, I didn't realize what he was up to.
Well, we're glad to have you here. Kirk, what's your report?
No meeting.
There's no meeting, and you'll be meeting January 10th at 3:00?
Right.
Well, this committee, Mr. Wolf did mention to me that he will be having one shortly and will notify all committee members of that. Lake Region, report on the December 15th meeting. The next meeting is February 2nd.
It was a very short meeting. I kind of have my notes in hand, but I don't. There is a meeting, I think it's May 9th, I'm not sure. Don't write down because Judy won't let me turn my phone on, so send there. But anyway.
Two shade.
On another place where they're going to go to introduce kids to vocations and all. There is something else that I wanted to mention here, though.
Is your report on the phone? Then you're welcome to turn it on.
There's no reports on the phone, just the date of that meeting. Anyway, I'll take it. We'll come back. That's it. The next, and the next meeting, you said was February 2nd.
It's February 9.
It is February 9.
February 9.
Yes, sir.
February 9, 9:00 AM.
Is that an in-person or another Zoom? That's an in-person?
And then Thursday, April 4th, for those of you writing stuff down, 5:30 PM dinner at the vocational.
Yeah.
February 9, 9:00 AM, and then April 4th on a Thursday at 5:30 PM are your next two days.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
All set?
I don't think I invited you, you didn't have a meeting, but we will be having one January 18th.
Oh, we have a question.
Well, the meeting is actually January 8th, Monday.
All right.
Well, there you go.
Oh, we have three dates.
Three dates. So should take a note.
And I'll ask you one thing. I think, I got an email and I forgot to bring it, but I think the Technology Committee, which I'm assigned to, is meeting maybe January 17th. I think I got an email from Mr. Brown.
Yes, Matt Brown, yes, I have that date here.
I'm not sure when I signed up for that.
So we have to add Technology?
Technology, we haven't had in a long time. Matt Brown's date.
Now I'm like, I don't have any meeting.
It is January 17th, that's a Wednesday, 3:00 PM to allegedly 4:00 PM, don't hold me to it. And that's usually right here in this room, 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Typically, that's in this room. It is in person, this room. And we'll add that to our agenda, and thank you, Amy.
It'd be nice to have Technology.
He's getting it back going, so there you are.
Policy Committee, we did not have a meeting, and our next meeting will be January 10th. Is that correct?
January 10th is correct, yes. One out of four, we're rolling. And curriculum was correct, so we're rolling on those two.
That's 250, that's pretty good.
Some bad, some bad.
So we do have three action items from the Policy Committee meeting that we had previously, and that is to consideration to approve the following policies as a second read and adoption. J K F R Administrative procedure for removal of students with disabilities. I H B A C child find policy. E B C A comprehensive health and safety and emergency management plan. I would look forward to a motion. I mean, a, yeah, motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Missy?
Second? I know she has one. She has a mistake on one of the policies. All right, let's hold off one second, discussion.
Okay. The first, the first policy, J K F R administrative procedure for removal of students with disabilities. There's nothing substantive, but there is an error, I think. You got it?
No, I have it here. I definitely made the adjustment.
Okay, you will have the thing.
I have it.
On page two.
Yes.
Under C5.
To C5.
The last three words, or says with, during the disciplinary removal consistent with 5C below, but there is no 5C below.
So I assume we're referring to 6C.
There is 6C.
6C.
And the same thing happens in D.
D.
It says with 5C above, it's really 6C.
6C.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So the two corrections, just for change of 5 to 6, change of 5 to 6 to refer to the appropriate references, what Jolene stated.
And per usual, Jolene is spot on.
Correct, spot on.
I don't know why I didn't notice it before.
They're the one by all of us.
You all set?
Get them all set.
All right, so we have a motion, a second now? Oh, we are all set, Brad.
So I actually did read these. What was the purpose of changing the word child to student all the way through it?
What was that? Why do we do that?
I think we can assume that all students are children, but I don't think we can assume that all children are students. I defer to the group.
We did do that for a reason, I can't remember why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I guess, did somebody say that students in high school are children or something, and that's why we're doing it all the way through?
Okay, I'm just curious, that's all.
Well, students are what we're really concerned with, right? Not just any child.
Yeah.
Are we comfortable keeping it as student?
Yeah, I think so.
I wasn't suggesting changing it, I just was curious.
Just curious about the background.
Yeah. Okay, so now, oh, we're not done? Okay.
I just wanted to point out, where is it? The E B C A comprehensive health and safety and emergency management plan. I can't get past the health part of it because we've never called it that in the past. It's always been emergency management plan, correct?
Yeah, we end that discussion.
But there is a state law that says that we have to have a comprehensive health and safety and emergency management plan, and that's new, isn't it?
Correct.
The health piece is new, but then there's nowhere that, when I looked at it, because Sue, Sue, thank you, Day, sent us the law to look at, and I don't see anything about health in it, but they're making us call it health and emergency. And it just concerns me that we might be tacitly agreeing to something that we're down the road going to be responsible for by just signing onto it. So I just.
Can we change that policy to suit us?
You're the board, you can do anything you want. It's your policy. Or we should comply with the law.
Right.
Even though, the only thing with the law is the title.
Because it didn't designate anything about health, it was the same, you know, emergency management plan. So I just wonder, okay, now we've been told to call it this, now down the road, is somebody then going to go, well, this is a health and emergency, now you have to do blah, 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 blah?
Oh, why didn't you do blah, blah?
Or why didn't you do, yeah?
If we're more comfortable, we certainly table it. I mean, I don't think there's a huge hurry.
Sure, let's remove that from the action items.
I just.
We will discuss it at policy.
I live in a world of unintended consequences. I look around, that's all I see here.
So just feel free to table it, and I know you looked at Allison's and so on, Maine statute, the legal reference 20A MRSA 1001 16, and it is in bold, Maine statute, comprehensive health and safety and emergency management plan, which is why the name got changed, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I would love to know why they changed the name, but then there was no, nothing about health.
Did you go a word search for the document and look for help, and there was nowhere?
No, Sue had sent us a copy of the law, so it's like, I don't feel like I can vote no because it's the law, and our job is to make sure we're complying with the law.
Me too.
At the same time, I'm concerned that I'm agreeing to something down the road that's going to come back and bite me in the behind.
Just so it says, the first sentence is to Allison's point about everything she said. Each school board shall annually approve a comprehensive health and safety emergency management plan. So I think the law almost does force this title, unless you have to do it tonight, but I think that's the direction, certainly statute would like you to go.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yes, you can do what you want, let me clarify, unless it violates the law, your policies rule unless there's a law.
I'm going to do a word search on that policy that Sue sent us and see if the words help is anywhere in the body of that document, and if not, maybe we can insert it. Yes, go ahead, Missy.
Allison, I only, did you look at our actual plan? Because this policy is referencing the plan, so you're talking about, you went and looked at the plan, I mean, that's the way I'm taking it. This policy says we will have this plan.
Right.
And you looked at the actual plan.
I have looked at the actual plan. It's two years ago now, I think, but I came in and read the whole thing. But it's, you know, it's an emergency plan, it's not a health plan. You know what I mean? So I don't know, I don't know what this means, I just, I'm always leery of going, okay, and then later on down the road, finding out that had way more implications than I thought it did.
Well, so I'd say we're establishing the fact that we are going to be forced to include that in our, I mean, we're going to have to rewrite the plan. Someone's rewriting the plan. Sudei is rewriting the health plan, I would say.
Well, thank you to Jolene, Allison, and Brad for reading those policies carefully. Appreciate it.
So we're pulling, the new vote, I think, right? Judy is.
It's not going to include E B C A.
So to be clear with everybody, you are, Missy has motioned the three, but Missy, if you'd like to re-motion for just the top two.
So moved first.
So J K F hyphen R, I H B A C is what you are now seconding. Jill?
All those in favor, let's raise your hand. Done, we have some work to do at policy.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, so fairly brief tonight, and I will try and provide one clarification, I thought a very good question. Not on the top, so for folks watching, appointments, Cerissa Miller, custodian, Caitlin Lane, van driver, resignation, Joe Viera, custodian, and intent to retire, so this is obviously worth a shout out. Three folks that have been with this district, providing dedication and service to our kids for a long time, want to thank them for their years here. Karen Duplan, Title I educational technician at our elementary school. Tonda Seer, grade three teacher at our elementary school. And Elsa Brown, special education teacher at our high school. We thank them from the bottom of our heart for all their years of service to 55. Fall 2023 learning plan, some of them might read this and say, hey, it's 24, you didn't update that. So the reason it's the fall 23 learning plan is that this school board approved it on August 16th. That will come back to you probably next month, and I guess we'll call it probably the spring 24 learning plan, and do it a couple times a year to prove what we're doing. And what I try and say every month is, I think, from my chair, and talking with our administrators regularly and walking around, I think things are going very well in school. This was back in COVID times, making these learning plans onsite five days a week, and we read it, some of it seems silly, now that we've sort of come out with a backside of COVID. Face masks are still available, of course, visitors are now allowed in school, and all those things are going very well for our function and logistics at school. So we're having a very good year.
Maggie? Did he hack my email? I put a bug in his ear.
Oh, okay, Count, in the, because I emailed Judy about maybe at 25.
Yeah, it's a reasonable thing, it makes sense.
But also, maybe just put a little depth and facts in there.
In the plan?
In the plan, just, you know, just a couple sentences.
You mean only your gender here?
No, well, I mean, when he, when he does, the next, next month.
The next PowerPoint.
Yes.
Yes, perfect. Sure?
Thank you.
No problem, Maggie, thank you.
Okay, last item under Superintendent's report, substitute teacher pay discussion.
Okay, so I think this has been kicked around a little bit at the board level on a couple of different occasions, so doing some research, looking at things, I'll tell you where we were at, where we are at, and what our probably closest geographic neighbor is at in terms of subpay. And I guess, look for your blessing, I think ultimately, probably the superintendent could set the subpay, but that's not great business to do on your own, so just wanted to chat with you. Prior to the minimum wage increase before the start of this year, our non-certified teachers were getting $100 a day, which more or less is in compliance with minimum wage. They are now getting $103 a day, more or less in compliance with minimum wage. Our certified teachers were getting $115 a day, so $15 more than non-certified teachers. They're now getting, you guessed it, for those who are following along, $118 a day, which is $15 more. So just to bring to this board, and I'm not saying we have to do what other people do, but I reached out to SAD 6, who we do, I guess would probably be in most direct competition with for substitutes, and their rate of pay for non-certified folks is $110 a day, and their certified folks are $140 a day. So non-certified, they pay $7 more than we do. I guess I would look for blessing to go to 110 to be more competitive with Bon Eagle. And certainly, I don't know that any of us would argue to have a certified teacher in the room would be pretty ideal in terms of substitute. Now, just being frank with this board, we don't have a lot of those folks kicking around, certified teachers who are coming to sub here, but if we should be fortunate enough to get one, 140 or anything in between, so you can say anything you want to me here. Carl, keep it at 103, 118, that's fine, if you'd like to do that. Bump it to 110, 140, match Bon Eagle.
Or 110.
110 for uncertified, 140 for certified. Or anything in between, or I'm just really looking for, genuinely looking for direction and guidance on what you'd like to do with subpay. I guess my recommendation would be to come as close as possible to Bon Eagle, they'd be comfortable with.
And we've talked over and over again about paying teachers more, including substitute.
I agree, I think we should go 110, 140.
I agree.
Any opposition?
Count, did you ever think of certified once upon a time?
So kind of a definite maybe certification? I guess you could do, and I think Bon Eagle has that, I was looking for the information, but I guess you could do.
Like a 125?
Like 130, a bachelor's degree former certified teacher, and you had your bachelor's, like you get a little kicker up to one, and that's fine.
Yeah, we would beat out Bon Eagle, they don't have such a thing.
Yeah, they do. Stole the idea, like, let me tell you exactly, hang on, geez, man, I'm getting old. Non-certified high school graduate, ed tech one is 110. Bachelor's degree or higher, and ed tech three certification is 130. Certified teacher is 140. Maybe we do the 130 for a bachelor's degree slash formerly certified person. I don't know if, does it have to be both, or you just have a bachelor's degree, or you're, well, you have to have a bachelor to be formally certi-, do you have to be formally certified or only a bachelor? What gets you the 130?
So 110, 130, 140.
What gets the 130, and do you agree with that?
Yeah, I would say a bachelor's.
Bachelor's period, you get 130. Everybody agree with that?
140 for a bachelor's, isn't it?
Well, we're doing certified as 130. Current certification, you get 140. So just a little less because you're not getting certified.
So it's like previous certification.
Well, it doesn't, or you could have a bachelor's degree in accounting. That would be my next question.
If it's a bachelor's degree in teaching, I agree with the 130. It's a bachelor's degree in woodland management, I'm not sure I'd agree with that.
Okay, so I think what Brad's saying, and I think I tend to agree with that. If you have a bachelor's degree in education base, so you could have, would have, should have had certification 130, bachelor's degree in anything else, you're just a tip of, I mean, just, but you're a regular sub at the 110. And if you're currently certified, you get the 140.
Yeah.
We all agree with that conceptually?
I agree.
We'll make the switch around here, too. 110, 130.
That took care of that.
Okay.
Do we need a motion or just consensus?
I don't, yeah, I don't think we need it, you can, if you want, you can vote officially if you'd like to.
Brad, you still have a question?
I have a comment. I was approached at the boys' basketball game last night by one of ed techs who is, is participating in that new program, said she's going to go to school for football week next week, and really excited about it, and wanted to thank the board for approving it.
How cool is that? Great story.
Missy?
It's a good job, board.
Just before we move on to other things, I didn't hear it in the stupid report, but I thought the Reefs Across America ceremony deserved a big public shout out because it was freezing cold, but staff, students, the middle school chorus, right?
Unbelievable.
JROTC stood out there, sang, it was so freaking cold, and it was really nice. Mike Lane, Sudei, JROTC.
Soccabee TV?
Soccabee TV.
Filming the event?
I noticed there were four wreaths still there on the ground, that the wooden thing is gone.
It is a lovely event.
And we publicized it this year in the Shuttles Guide, which is great.
Sure, sure, it is, it's great. Oh, lots of good news there, all right.
Thank you for that. We're going to be going into executive.
I'll try and say something nice, you don't have to say it yourself. I'll try and say something nice, you don't have to say it yourself.